I'd like to call to order the planning commission meeting for November 8th. Could we have a roll call of ten minutes, Ms. Blaine, please?
Vern Ogden.
Here.
Joe Chapel.
Here.
Don McBride, absent. Rene Spinato.
Here.
Chris Bryant.
Here.
Thank you. Public comments on any matters that might not be concerning our agenda tonight. Anything other than the matters concerning the agenda. Do we have anybody written up on that?
No, I don't.
Nope. Approval of minutes of the previous workshop and regular meeting October 11th. Commissioners, have you had a chance to look at those and how do they look to you?
They look fine.
That's good.
I make a motion, they be approved.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded, they be approved. They shall be approved as written. Item four, discussion and possible action.
Don't we have other minutes, Joe?
We had two of them, workshop and regular meetings.
Oh, we did. I'm sorry. I even have my hearing aids on.
Yes, you do, yeah. We approved them both. Item four, discussion and possible action for partial road closure on Pulse Drive. Could we have staff report on that, please?
Okay, so we had two formal objections and an informal objection that actually doesn't do anything formal unless it goes to district court. We also believe for the sake of future development, if ownership was ever going to change, it would not be in the best interest of the city to close that road easement.
And that's staff's final order. Do we have anybody here this evening that wishes to speak on that matter? Could I ask you to come up and give us your name and address, please?
My name is Damon Wilds of 521 Pulse Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Wilds.
I'm actually the owner of all the property that has existed on 525 except for one .4 acre property which is currently in the ownership of a Kent Mr. and Mrs. Cantrell. We have discussed it as I have a contract for deed whenever they miss Cantrell passes, so I'll own that property. I have no future intentions of selling any of the property on Pulse Drive. It is also stated in my formal trust that my kids nor their kids can sell any of that property on Pulse Drive. So I do kind of have a little bit of objection to not being approved based on selling if that's the common reason for not approving it. But we've been trying to work on this for, I've personally been working on this for about four and a half years. And this is the first time that we've gotten anywhere with even trying to have some type of approval. So it's just, it becomes a very bad nuisance because there's people that drive down there. It's ultimately a private road although it's still, you know, has seat easement at the time. People drive down, they turn around in my front yard because there is no, it's a complete dead end, there is nowhere to go. They back up in my front yard, they turn around, they tear up my front yard all the time. And knowing that I'm going to build a house on the adjacent property as well for my future home, and then I'm going to give the home that I have to my children, that I really want to privatize that area so that I can stop unwanted traffic for the majority purposes. Especially when our airport has fly-in, for instance, they like to cut across the field and drive down my road or, you know, what have you. I call it my road because I've been there most of my life, so, since the early 90s. And at this particular time, after acquiring all the property on that road, it really makes me feel as if it's my own road. So I just ask for the approval based on the fact of we're only privatizing the parts that I existently own and not the parts that the city needs to maintain. And at this particular time, we haven't maintained that road, and that's a comment between Tenny Maker and myself and prior to that because the greater guys were just tearing the road up more than they were helping. So that's all I have to say about it. I don't have any, I mean, if it gets objected, it gets objected and it gets kicked out, but it just, I have a lot of personal reasons for trying to close it. I've got kids that play on that road. People come flying down that road 45 miles an hour and slam on the brakes at the end because they have nowhere to go. And they don't realize that because they're lost and they don't have any, they don't have any clue where they're at.
Have you had law enforcement informed on this and tried to do anything?
Oh, yeah. We've had police officers that would come in and out. I had a lot of frequent visitors that would drive up the end of the road and turn around and drive off, but the same cars were coming back two or three times. I have a lot of property down there. I have trailers, I have equipment, tractors, and so on and so forth for managing all that property. And I was concerned about whether somebody would come and take that property. And at that particular time, I did inform the Guthrie Police Department, and they were sending somebody up and down the road. For about a month, they sent somebody up and down the road every now and then through the night just to make sure that, you know, there was no visitors.
Are there speed limit signs and things?
Absolutely not.
No.
No, this is a country rule privatized road. I believe you have been out there because I believe you did talk to Ms. Cantrell.
I believe it.
But it's, I mean, it's a gravel-based 14-foot road. One car drives down the road at a time. If two cars get on the road, one's got to back up, turn around somewhere. Because there's no, I mean, it's, ultimately, it's a private road in form although the city currently somehow has easement to it. We went through abstracts, and we've tried to figure out how that ever, where that took place, and we can't even find where it took place through the title company and everything.
So it just runs into your property? It doesn't, it's not adjacent to it?
No.
Is that correct?
It runs into one of my properties, yes. Yeah, it dead ends on the end of a 34-acre property that I have owned there. The house that is at the very end of the road on the right is my existing residence, which is 525.
The property to the...
To the east.
To the east?
Yes.
That's your property as well?
Yes, it goes all the way to the airport.
Have you questions of staff? I'm looking at their report here. On any of the information, I'm sure you, have you talked with them on what the objections are with ONG, OG&E, AT&amp;T, things like, have you discussed this with them? Do you see that side of it? And have you asked Ms. Blaine about this?
As of the last meeting, yes. We were in the informal conversation of, we were going to table it because they had objections. She was going to try to work through it, Ms. Blaine was going to try to work through it. I did request copies of those objections be forwarded to me so that I can call OG&E and I can discuss my portion, you know, my part with land management and so on and so forth, and try to put my two cents in to help. What they're worried about is if this gets switched over, they lose their easement, which is not the case. If the easement stays existent, even if it becomes private property, it would be no different than having an OG, I mean, on my larger property there to get to my house, I'm going to have to form an easement with them all the way back to where the house is going to be because it is 3,400 feet from where the existing pole ends. So, I mean, it's going to be the same scenario. Through land management, I have to give them an easement.
Is this city property to the north?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Of Pulse Drive, okay.
Yes, the airport does own the property on the other side, and we've, we've had, I've had plenty of discussions with the airport manager regarding closing the road as well as we're going to put up a stockade fence. I was waiting for this closure and stuff to take place. I have talked with Leroy, and we have discussed, everybody's in approval for putting up the fence. We were just waiting for this process to take place so that, because technically my property is on one side of the road with easement, I can't put the fence on the north side of the road by rights of the city.
Have you had a chance to read the objections?
No, sir.
You've not?
I, I'm not aware that we were going to object.
Objection for, the city is what they're saying. Due to the objections, current infrastructure present and the potential for future development under different ownership, staff would recommend denial of this request for closure based on these information that they have derived from ONG, OG&E. Cox was no response, but AT&amp;T was, et cetera. Ms. Blaine, is, did he, he hasn't had a chance to see these, or have you had a chance to discuss this? Is there any avenue other than the fact that you're noting potential future development? Is, that's the major concern?
So we talked last month, and I said, hey, I've got some objections and some I'm waiting to hear back from. And he said, well, do they understand that the utility easement would be reserved as the road easement is closed? And I said, I believe that that's their understanding, but I recommunicated with everyone. So this was the final that I got back, and they still had, I guess everyone except for Cox has still had objections and said just basically typically when they have infrastructure in that area that it's very, there's got to be a very compelling reason for them to have no objection to that. So...
Do you, do you see the city's side?
I understand where the city's side is taking their objection, but that's where I had requested to be able to discuss with them from a private sector, not just as well as the city.
Are you talking about the folks that are objecting?
Right, to be able to send them a letter of explanation of why I'm asking for this to be done.
Is that, is that a worthwhile adventure to follow up on, Ms. Blaine, do you think? If he's not seeing these particular ones, maybe the latest, is this something that he could still pursue and we could, we could address this at another meeting?
I mean, I think we can table it, and I'm happy to share the contact info, and you can, you know, try. This is a second response from everyone. I'm okay if that's something that Mr. Wilds wants to pursue.
If he wanted to pursue, is this something, and I see we have our city manager here too, is this something that a private citizen can do, Leroy, and perhaps get some, get some help to help the gentleman out if possible?
The old problem. I've been here two years, and we've dealt with more things that 20 years ago looked like a good idea. Land wasn't going to sell. Well, forever's a long time. And to say that that property will never change hands and we develop differently is a pretty broad statement today forever. And once that road's gone, if it develops, put that road back, we'll be getting there actually.
Yeah.
So the city does not see, you know, if you want to put a dead end road sign up or something like that.
And I've requested.
But if that property is bought forever and then it sells 30 years from now to somebody else, that you have to...
Do you possibly, and I realize you are new with us, we're all very happy to have you, sir, do you, can you think of any other avenue that Mr. Wilds might take to take care of this problem that he has? I mean, other than law enforcement, more law enforcement, although they're busy and they can only be there so often, and any other thoughts on that, sir?
Or can go to court?
I mean, simply, my request would simply be to be able to put up a gate. I don't care if the city has easement or ownership of the road, I just want to be able to put up a fence or an electric gate on the road. I mean, that's my total request, is to be able to just simply put up a fence to force people to turn left by the first Capitol Trolley Road, which is unnamed road, and not drive down the road and take the potential of running over my kids or anything like that. Because my kids are free roamers and just the way it is. So other than the fence issue, I don't see any other issue besides putting up a gate. And then if I could get special approval to put up the fence, knowing that it's on the wrong side of the road, that might be a little, I mean, we've already talked, I mean, about the fence being on the airport side of the property line. It's the, it's the property line for the airport property, and then the roadway's a 25-foot section by itself that's no man's land right now. It actually is not deeded to anybody, it's not even deeded to the city. That's why I was saying, we couldn't find anywhere where that 25-foot section has ever been deeded to anybody. And there's no ordinance that says the city even owns it, which has been a real, you know, I didn't want to argue that point at the time because I was trying to do it the professional way of filing applications and so on and so forth. But ultimately, my goal is to put up an electric gate, keypad entry gate, down where we requested to close it on the far west side of the road, and simply just be able to keep traffic out of there. If I can do that, I could care less if the ownership stays in the ownership of the city. If that's something we need to run through special permission or special planning committee, you know, whatever, the board of adjustments or something where we could get approval to put that up and then be able to put up a stockade fence on the north side, which would be the south side of the Guthrie Airport property, I would be simply fine with that, with the exception of having, you know, it in writing so that everybody's okay with it and they don't come back and tell me that I got to remove my gate after I go through the expense of putting it up.
Can I ask you? You were going to say?
Well, I mean, my thought is the gate issue is separate from closing the road.
Well, that was the ultimate goal of closing the road.
Yeah, but my thought is because of the objections and because of the possible growth here, I would make a motion to not approve but to allow you to see if you can enter into something with the city to put a gate up. I don't know if that's possible, but...
It would only be, from my standpoint, it would only be maybe the board of adjustments that would approve it as a special circumstance, special, like special use permit.
But as is with the objections from the utilities and the potential for, you know, airport property too.
And I understand the objections as explained, I just haven't had an opportunity to be able to address them myself. Or again, last month, I tried to be able to address them so that we wouldn't cross this bridge again. And either get a no, you know, either I get a yes or a no from the utility company and so on and so forth, but be able to at least address it and not just throw my hat in the window and say, okay, fine, I give up. Not saying that I want to argue the point, I'm just, simply, I just want to put a gate up, so if we...
Mr. Alsop, do you see any, any other avenue of recourse?
Not for this board.
What would it take to put up a...
I make a motion to deny the request.
Just say, what would it take to put up a dead end sign at the very least?
I've been working on that for about 14 years, and it still hasn't happened.
On the city's end?
And Tenny Maker actually just released, just told me about six months ago, right before we started this application, that he would have one placed. And it still hasn't been done.
If I can make a comment at this point, too, it sounds like the, besides your children playing, one of the other issues that you're concerned with are cars speeding down the road.
Yeah, somebody's going to end up in my, I mean, they have, they've all, they've went all the way into the vacant property.
Right. But if, perhaps you could pay to put in speed bumps so that people would be forced to go 20 miles an hour down that, you know?
Yeah, I mean, alternately, I paid to put gravel and stuff on the road. I've done that for about the last 11 years, and the city hasn't maintained it. I maintain it with my own tractor. I've put thousands of tons of gravel on that road in the past 20 years between myself and my father, so speed bumps would probably help, but I just don't, I just don't know that that would...
Are the dead end signs available, Mr. Alsop?
I will have to look into it.
I have a motion, I have, and I don't have a second. My motion dies for lack of a second. Do we, do we wish to, to table this and then take it to let Mr. Wilds see if he can talk with some of the utilities? And good luck, that's a lot of, lot of fun.
I would appreciate the opportunity to at least send them a letter of explanation. All they can do is tell me no, and then I would be more solidified in my own. Understanding what Mr. Leroy said was, you know, the city may not want to do it anyway. I don't know if it's worth that venture because based on his particular comments and the way the staff might go, it might not go good.
I think what we're trying to do is come up with some way that we might be able to help you out here.
I would like...
And if you had that opportunity to do that, would that be something that you can fix him up with, Ms. Blaine, where he can at least contact these people? And we know how difficult that is and how much time you spend trying to contact these people, and you will find out that that's a real challenge.
Yeah.
But, and address this, and address this at another, another meeting?
Sure.
Can I have a little motion to table it?
I have a question.
Okay.
Can, once a road has been closed, can it be reopened? I mean, the property isn't being given to him, would it be?
Only if it goes through vacation.
It's a two-step process. One is road closure, and it can be reopened. But if the city closes it, then that would open the door to go to district court to vacate it. Then, once vacated, then it would not be eligible to be reopened.
It's, just one last comment to base on that. Is there a way to close the road under the circumstance that I don't take it to district court and vacate it? Can that be?
I, I think that needs to be addressed to staff and Mr. Alsop here, not to this, not to this planning commission.
We'll, we'll table that, and then we'll direct, we'll directly communicate that later. Because that would be another alternative if that's an avenue that's available, that's just the same as being able to have the ability to just put the gate up.
Any comment on that, Mr. Alsop?
They have to research.
Okay. Can we, can I have a motion to table this, please?
I make a motion that this be tabled pending further research.
Okay, second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to table this pending further research. Could I have a vote, Ms. Blaine?
Sure. Rene Spinato?
Yes.
Chris Bryant?
Yes.
Vern Ogden?
Yes.
Joe Chapel?
No.
You want to table it, okay.
It would be difficult.
Three to one. Thank you, Mr. Wild, we appreciate your time, and we'll, we'll hope things will work out for you.
Thank you, we'll see you next month.
Keep the children safe.
Thank you.
Next item, discussion, and item five, discussion and possible action for partial road closure of South Poplar Street. Staff report, please.
Okay, this is a little bit of a complex situation. We have a 25-foot drainage non-conforming lot over on Grant, and the actual residential home sits over the property line into the roadway easement, but the front property line is also a non-conforming front yard setback. And so they, in this case, have requested to close, to obtain that road easement back so that their house is sitting on the lot. So when that closes, it would become part of the lot.
On that one side?
On that one side, yes.
That's the poplar side?
Yes. And so I'll just quickly read. ONG had an objection, they have infrastructure in that area, but if you see the attached map, it's close but not, not where we would be requesting the closure. OG&E, they only had a residential security light. Again, they do no formal response until an application moves to district court according to their policy. Cox has facilities in the alleyway and no objection. AT&amp;T, no objection. No objection from surrounding property owners. Typically, when we get objections from the utilities and the service providers, we would not recommend approval. In this particular case, we are recommending approval based on closing the road easement between the north right-of-way of Grant Avenue to the south right-of-way of the alley between lots 10 and 5 through 9 of block 84. And that would essentially just be for the length of their lot on their side of the road, reserving the utility easement, and then that would combine with their existing lot to put the structure back on the lot. They would still need to go to board of adjustment to get a variance application for the non-conforming front yard setback, but we are trying to clean up a past situation and help them out if we can.
I note there that you're also pointing out that a survey would, would be needed to reflect this, to assuming that the survey would need to be done before the permit or the application would be approved?
So, yes, they did do a survey, but we would need their surveyor to go back and identify where exactly that utility easement is. Typically, it would be 10 or 15 feet, but we want to make sure that that is going to be separate and we can still give them enough roadway easement to join to their lot so that the structure's completely on the lot, and then they can go to board of adjustment if need be while reserving that utility easement.
And I see no formal response by OG&E unless it moves forward to district court. Would we anticipate a problem from OG&E at that time?
No, because they just have a security light in the area versus on the other application, they reported having a three-phase line, so very minimal infrastructure.
Do we have anybody here that would like to speak on it? Yes, please, would you come forward and give us your name and address, please?
Thank you very much. Good evening to everyone. I'm Angela Watson, and I brought along with me today my partner in business, marriage, and crime so that he could help me through this process of hopefully...
And your address, Ms. Watson?
My address is 14, I mean, 1713 Kyle Drive, Guthrie.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And I'm in agreement, of course, with the recommendation, just trying to be sure that we can have clear title to the property. Since 2012, my husband and I have been working to try to help revitalize some of the inner-city structures here and try to increase the inventory of, I'll say, quality, affordable housing here in Guthrie. I was born here, raised here, and had a career and decided to stay here in retirement and work to try to help revitalize this, this city. This is one of the structures we did buy. We purchased the entire block in hopes to provide some more, some more of those affordable structures or affordable quality structures for first-time home buyers or individuals who are living here who make the average salary here. Some of the newer houses are out of the range, price range, and so we want to focus on that range of houses that are affordable for individuals who make the median salary here.
Questions, Commissioners?
So, so we can, we can approve with the contingency that they get the proper survey done? How does that work?
Would that come back, Leroy?
Or do we need to wait for the survey?
Probably be best to wait till all the details are worked out on this one because it's unusual, you've got setback requirements, you've got to combine two lots to make the lot size work, you're going to have to get part of the easement on one side because the structure actually sets out in the easement. It's a multifaceted situation.
Do I assume that perhaps when you purchased, you did not know the, the home was sitting in, had had a couple of problems location-wise?
Well, the two previous owners indicated that their interaction with the city was that the road was closed, so it was their responsibility to maintain.
You're talking about Poplar in this case?
I'm talking about just that, yeah, one block and a half of Poplar that isn't closed. And it's been, I mean, it's not officially closed, but it has, it's impassable.
The north end of Poplar, is it closed on that block?
It's impassable. It's not even visible.
It's overgrown.
Yeah, it looked like even from the air it wasn't visible.
Okay, yeah, it is, and then I did take a few pictures and provided some pictures of what it looks like today. And speaking with the water department, they said that house has been there for over 30 years, and it once had water service. So maybe along the way somewhere, the line moved. I don't know, but it's a...
Maybe it was an earthquake.
Maybe that was it.
Moved the house.
Maybe that was it, but...
How did it get built in the first place?
That's a question that no one seems to be able to answer.
30 years ago, that's how it got built. Is there any problem, what's your, Ms. Blaine, with the city as far as, is Poplar ever expected to be built through there? But even if so, you're saying if this survey can be done, this part of it can be handled? Is that what we're saying?
Right, on the city's side, there's no plans on opening or paving that block.
I have, I have a comment. At one point, I actually read all the, very small print on this, but on Schedule B of the mortgage inspection certificate, it's item number nine. See, I really did read this, the fine, fine print. It's saying there that when the roads were accepted by the city when the plat was done, and I'm assuming this is way back when, that that particular part of Poplar was not included in the blanket acceptance that the city made at the time when the subdivision was designed. So that would appear to me that the city never accepted it at all.
I read that as well, but, but they didn't continue to maintain it either.
No, if the city doesn't accept it, then the city doesn't maintain it. That's, that's how I understand it.
Well, I misinterpreted that.
Okay.
But I interpreted it as though they did not accept to close it, they just did not maintain it. So it seems as though I was interpreting it.
Well, it's one of those things that's put way down here on this, and... Well, it's one of those things that's put way down here on this. And, yeah, I interpret it unless the city manager and the city planner say otherwise, that it would be such that that particular road in question or large grassy area was never accepted as a public street at all.
The department says whether it was, whether it is a formal acceptance of the public streets and alleys of the subdivision of Capitol Hill. When you accept the subdivision, you're accepting the dedication of the streets and the subdivision.
Okay, hold on. Okay, it does not affect the subject property. It is not shown and is blanketed in nature. The resolution that such and such does not encumber the subject property with any easements. So was then that particular lot then considered the edge of the subdivision, such that that part of poplar on that east side, west side, was just not included? Because usually when the city accepts the streets, aren't they so named? I'm pulling from far memory.
The survey is showing it as a city street. So if the surveyor didn't think it was a city street, they wouldn't have showed it as a city street. But apparently...
Obviously hasn't been maintained as a city street.
You've got more legal expertise than I do, so...
You're going to say, Ms. Watson?
Well, I also own one property, one block to the north, where a similar situation occurred. The one half of the block was closed. And the same surveyor did both of those properties, and he didn't have access to the fact that that one was closed. I went back and dug it up to give to the surveyor, so that now he has his records updated. But I found a lot of conflicts in city records and the assessor's records.
Are you, are you okay with the, with the staff's recommendation here about getting survey, a survey here that would obviously be recorded prior to accepting this applicant? Are you, are you okay with that? Have you discussed this with Ms. Blaine, or do you have any questions about what staff is saying here?
I would absolutely not object to having a survey done. I have had a PIN survey done, and you're saying we need an additional survey for the city on behalf of the city.
Just have them map out the utility easement, and that way that we can look at that and say, there's enough roadway easement left to, when it's closed, to become part of that lot so that the structure's sitting completely on that lot. And then they can make that recommendation to just close the roadway easement while reserving the utility easement. We just, without a survey, we can't exactly say if that's 15 feet or where that is.
Okay. Do not object to that.
And if, if that is done, and they provide that recorded and everything, of course, then the city staff, you have no problem with this? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And do I further read, Harv, that you're saying that she's still, that they still may have to go before the Board of Education, Board of Adjustment on the Grant street side?
Yeah, on the, on the Grant street side, the survey is showing the front setback of the house to be just two and a half feet off of the property line. So you would just have to get a setback variance through the Board of Adjustment for that, since it's non-conforming. For that zoning, the minimum setback requirement is 25 feet. So you would just need a variance.
Did you know this also?
No.
And might ask staff again if they go before the Board of Adjustment if we, if she's able to meet the poplar street, poplar street situation, going before the Board of Adjustment. You would have some discussion for the Board of Adjustment staff, and of course on that. Can you, can you discuss what your thoughts to the Board of Adjustment would be if this, the portion that the Planning Commission okay's, where that would stand for her so that they can proceed further, or whether they should back up or anything at this point?
So it would still be a non-conforming lot because it doesn't meet setback requirements, but we could make it a legal non-conforming lot, which would let you have the flexibility to do financing or different things with the property.
And that would be wonderful.
And you feel that would not be a problem for them to proceed on that if we meet the, if they meet the poplar street needs? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I'd like to say that I admire your work, helping, you know, struggling neighborhoods and, and providing affordable housing for people that are, like you said, in the middle.
Thank you.
But it's good for Guthrie, and it's good for its residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Any other questions, everyone? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion. Somebody?
The motion is to table it, right?
No, not this one.
Oh, no.
This one was...
Because she's going to...
She's going to bring the survey back, so we just want to table it tonight, and then when she brings the survey back with the utility easement mapped, we can make sure there's enough roadway easement left over.
I stand corrected. All right, motion to table it, please?
I did.
Motion's been made and seconded to table. All in favor? Can we just say an aye here?
Aye.
Save the lane. Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Watson. She did a fine job representing you, young man. Keep her mouth. Our third item is item six here is discussion of possible action regarding a complex lot split of Chris Madison Road. Staff, again, your thoughts, please?
Okay, so I did, I did a staff report for this item, but it's come to our attention that the ownership of the property is not reflected by the applicant. And so we would, we would need both owners of the property to sign the application and present that ownership.
So these two should be tabled to the next meeting?
Yes.
With the new, new application made?
Yes.
Motion?
I move to table.
Second.
Move table, the motion's been made to move, to table it to the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we got it all there, Ms. Blaine. Thank you all for your attendance on this, and I'm assuming maybe, should we have given anybody a chance to speak on that last one? Is there any necessity, or did we, just the reason that is being tabled is the necessity for a new application? And so that's all clarified with everybody? Thank you very much. Our next item is discussion of possible action regarding amending a portion of ordinance 2422 specifically residential accessory structures. Staff?
So you have copies of the new draft ordinance before you, and I will let Leroy come and present and talk about some of the modifications that were made after the dialogue from our last workshop from October 11th. And then, of course, nothing needs to be decided tonight. You guys are just getting these, but hopefully you can take these with you, and we can schedule a workshop potentially next month where we can mull through the final details.
Okay. Mr. Osop, good to have you here, sir.
Yes. In college, one time I was told by a professor that a camel was a horse designed by committee. And this particular ordinance is kind of an ugly camel. Lot of different input from different players, trying to accommodate all the different desires. It's become quite a challenge.
I'd like to record to show that that got a lot of good humor in the folks behind you.
But we have made an attempt to take the feedback. I wasn't at your last meeting, so I had to go from notes. But we've tried to take the input that we've gotten individually from members of the Planning Commission plus the notes from your workshop. And what we will be doing in this ordinance is paragraph K out of the residential period standards will go away and be replaced with a new paragraph K that is many, many paragraphs. The first item will be on the first page, the applicability of this standard. And it appears to us that this standard should apply to all residential accessory buildings in the following residential zoning districts, R1, R2, R5, and R6. We're not sure that it needs to be applicable to the mobile home park district, but we would defer to your judgment, of course, as the Planning Commission. And then, because of the way our ordinance, zoning ordinance work, you can have residential property in commercial zones. So we go on to say that all residential accessory buildings on property in zoning districts listed below, when the property's being used for residential use. It may be zoned commercial, but it's being used for residential. So we have proposed that A1 general agriculture district, unless the parcel property exceeds five acres, in your infinite wisdom, you may decide that that should be a different number. Same thing in the suburban district. Those two Ags, we felt after they got a certain size, that this ordinance probably shouldn't be applicable to them. And then the neighborhood shopping district, general commercial district, and the highway commercial district, the central business district, but would not apply to manufacturing and the general industry, I1 and I2, because you're not supposed to have residential in those two zones anyway. And then the flood plain, because you shouldn't be having buildings on the flood plain anywhere. We've tried to define, this is very similar to the definition that you had at your last workshop. I have added, any attached garage or carport that is constructed or added after the original construction of the principal residential building shall be treated as a residential accessory building. So if a garage was built at the time the house was built, that's fine, but they come back later and want to add a garage, it would be treated as an accessory building under this ordinance, so that it would have to meet certain standards. Same way with carport. So a garage would be a residential accessory if it was detached, or if it was built and added to the house after the original construction. Same way with carport. It would include workshops, garden sheds, gazebos, poolhouse, and those are just general examples. We have added a requirement for a special use permit. All detached accessory buildings shall be located behind the furthest rear wall of the main residential structure on the property unless otherwise permitted by a special use permit set forth below. So all accessory buildings, if you look at the back wall of the structure, would have to be behind that back wall. If it was going to be to the side of the house or the front of the house, they would have to come forward for a special use permit, which gives the city council and the Board of Planning Commission an opportunity to review it. Now, that will probably increase the workload of this body and, to some degree, the city council reviewing these, but that's the only way that you can make sure you're comfortable with things that are built to the side or front of the structure. And just to make it clear, that applies to any carport that's not located behind the furthest wall of the house as well.
So basically, looking at this?
Yes.
And correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like more often than not, most people aren't trying to put a metal building in their front yard.
Correct.
So more often than not, a special use permit would apply to probably a carport?
Carport or garage just being attached, probably, that would more than likely want to be on the side or the front of the structure. Correct. The general provisions, I think, are pretty much the same as at your workshop. So I won't get into those. You'll have a chance to read those between now and when you schedule your next workshop, whether it be at your next regular meeting or in a separate meeting. I did on...
Excuse me, everybody, if I assume if there's no red in here, nothing's changed or been added, is that correct?
I won't guarantee that. I did the red for things I wanted to make sure I pointed out to you, but I won't guarantee that there have not been some changes that were red, but they were probably not significant in nature.
Okay, thank you.
I did add on B that deals with plumbing fixtures in an accessory building, one toilet and one wash basin restroom plumbing fixture. I put it in italically commonly referred to as a half-bath, so that some people will understand that.
Oh, appear unbeaten.
And that's in 4B on page three.
Right.
Still can't use shipping containers except during a construction period when you have a permit. Can't use motor vehicles, truck trailers for storage, except when you're moving, those type of things. Number five on page four, limit to the number of residential accessory buildings. You all had some discussion of that at your workshop. I'm not sure I fully understood it. The notes, but what I garnered from that is you could have one attached garage or carport and still have two detached residential accessory buildings. If you have a detached garage, it counts as one of those, and you can only have one other. And the purpose there is not to fill the yard with multiple accessory buildings.
I note that we didn't, do we have the sizes of those detached ones addressed? Was that, is that coming up? On the size of those?
That comes later.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Do you want me to wait?
I'll watch.
Okay. Do we have TVs there?
Right at home.
Building permit requirements, we have stated that residential structure, residential accessory buildings that...
Actually, that...
Are under 120 square feet or smaller in size, do not require a building permit. But even though they don't require a building permit, they still have to follow the standards of the ordinance. They have to have pitched or peaked roof. The exception that we make in there is that in the historic district, doesn't matter what the size is, it requires permit. But any other area in town, if it's under 120 square feet, does not require a building permit. But as you'll see later when we get into the overlay districts, even if it's below the 120, it will require a building permit and a review and approval by the Historic Preservation Commission. Metal buildings that are 120 square feet or below are allowed if they meet the standards set forth below, must be located behind the furthest rear wall of the main residential structure, so in the backyard, basically, have a pre-installed finished paint from earth tone color palette and/or a color palette which complements the main dwelling structure, have raised or standing seams be a minimum of 20 gate, 26 gate steel, and have corner trim. So these smaller 10 by 12s that don't have to be permitted can be metal, but it has to meet these standards. Height limitations, there will probably be a lot of different opinions on height. What we put in here is the same as what you looked at last time. It shall be 15 feet at the tallest point of the... It shall be 15 feet at the tallest point of the structure. Cannot exceed the peak height of the principal building or the residence on the property, whichever one's less. So if a house is 12 foot tall at the peak, the building, the accessory building can only be 12 foot. If it's 17 feet, you can only go 15 feet with your accessory building at the peak. Exceptions may be granted by a special use permit approved by city council based on a recommendation from the planning commission. So if someone felt they had an unusual situation that justified a taller building, they would have to come through a special use permit process to get that approved.
I have a question. Are most of the prefab buildings less than 15 feet tall?
Are, are, are less than 15 feet?
Like a 10 by 12 with a loft, is that? Like, like at Home Depot Lowe's or, or? The ones that they sell?
Probably for the most part, less than 15 feet.
All right.
15 feet's really tall.
Yeah.
And we're not married to that number. But you have to start somewhere. And my limited research, that seemed to be a starting place for the discussion. Roof types. We just went into the type of roofs. Basically, they have to be a pitched roof of either peak with gable or hip type roof or similar to the residence on the property. Shall have a minimum roof overhang of 12 inches at both the ease and the gable end. Overhang should generally be proportionate to the height of the building being constructed with some exceptions, of course, due, due to function. But at a minimum, they should have a 12 inch overhang. Carports located in the front of the furthest rear wall, which would basically be the side yard or front yard, may have a flat roof. If in interpretation of the building code official, the flat roof would allow the carport to blend in better with the surrounding neighborhood street sketch. And Commissioner Chapel was the one that came up with that thought process that some of the carports that you see when you drive around the neighborhoods, they have flat roofs actually blend in with the street view in the neighborhood better than those that have pitched roofs. Shed or lean-to roofs are prohibited. Building materials. We go through the building materials, which is very similar to what was in what the document you reviewed before. Exterior wall materials can be brick, stone, stucco, synthetic stucco, or ephesus wood siding or cement board. And then unless prohibited due to the property being located within one of the overlay districts contained in the ordinance, metal siding on detached residential accessory buildings are allowed if they meet the following standards. And it's the same standards as those that are 120 feet or less. So if it's not in an overlay district that we will talk about in a minute, you could have a metal building in your backyard as long as it met those standards for a metal building. Minimum size or maximum size, I'm sorry, of residential accessory buildings. We have two things in play here. We have a zoning ordinance that says that you can only cover on an interior lot the total lot 25% of the lot. So if you take a lot.
Is that just for accessory buildings or is that for buildings period? That's for everything?
All buildings. If you read below, accessory buildings may cover up to a maximum of 20% of the required rear yard. But in no case shall the coverage of the total lot exceed the amount specified. So if you flip the page and say I've got a quarter acre, roughly 10,890 square feet. If you take, I can only, I've got an interior lot. I can only cover 25% of that lot with building. So if you take my house, if it's 2,000 square feet and I've got a 700 foot garage, I can't add a storage building.
You're done.
I'm done. So there's many.
Is this existing?
This is out of the zoning ordinance.
These are existing guidelines.
Yes.
I assume that's to, to protect the runoff and drainage.
It's a variety, but that would be one. So as we look at the size requirements we're going look at in this ordinance, it needs to be blended or married to the size limitations in the zoning ordinance. We don't want to create something that conflicts with another ordinance. And that's why I just put this in reference. I also, somebody had at the prior meeting said two and a half percent of the lot size or at a maximum half of your house size or your residence. And I just put in there minimum area or the square footage. For example, if you owned an acre of 43,560, you could have accessory buildings and this would cover, if you had two accessory buildings, it would be the total. You could have 1,089 square feet of accessory buildings or half the size of your residence. So if you had a 2,000 square foot house, you could have two accessory buildings, but they couldn't total over 1,000.
Are these, are these both in here then? Are these, are these suggested? Both of these are in there or one or the other we need to select? Is that what we're saying?
What we select needs to marry or match or at least not conflict with the zoning ordinance. We need some more input from you on size. Because there's been too many suggestions for us to pick one. So that's an area that's still gray area to work out what is the maximum size building you can have. We need your assistance on. The overlay district, one of them is the Guthrie Capital Townsite Historic Overlay District. Rebecca, I think, has provided you a map of that area. That would be attached as an exhibit to this ordinance. And then we will go back and actually give a narrative.
But we did get it in our.
I think it was in your agenda packet. All of the provisions in this ordinance will apply to residential accessory buildings in the historic history unless there are more stringent requirements in this section or additional requirements. And then they would supersede what's in the previous part of the ordinance.
Which, which picture is it?
And it'd be the third one in light blue.
Blue, there we go.
Yeah, that's downtown.
North Guthrie Overlay District.
Oh, and Aaron's got it up for us too now.
In this district, there would be no metal buildings, accessory buildings. You would have to have.
Except for the ones that already exist.
I should say new.
Is that the case currently or is that a change? For no metal buildings in historic?
They've never been allowed, but some somehow.
Some haven't got in.
Some years ago.
Currently.
HP approved one.
We should have no metal buildings constructed since this ordinance was adopted. But quite frankly, there are some out there. I've only been here two years. I'm not going to take responsibility for all of them.
I don't know that you're responsible for any of them.
Roofs, it's always been in the past, you could have a metal roof. And so that's in red in case you decide, review this and decide in, since you can't have metal siding on the sidewalls in historic district, can you have a metal roof? Right now, you can't.
You can or cannot?
You can't.
Okay.
You can't have a metal roof on all of them right now. You just can't have metal sidewalls. The if you go through, it kind of lays out what you have to do to have a metal roof. And then the collars will have to be the same color palette as what's used in the historic district by the preservation commission now. The site plan and building plan for all residential accessory buildings are subject to approval by the historic preservation commission. So that's the most restrictive part of town is the historic district. Then we have a second overlay district, which is pretty much noble in division. A thousand foot on each side is what's being proposed that is somewhat less restrictive. In this one, you can have buildings 120 square feet or less with metal siding, as long as they're in the rear part of the yard. And you can also have metal roofs if they meet the requirements. Then the third overlay district is what I refer to as the midtown overlay district, which has two parts.
Can I go back to the commercial?
Temple and the North Guthrie.
I got a question about the commercial one.
Yes.
The existing commercial guidelines, they can have a metal building, but it's a percentage. Is, would that still be in effect in these two?
It would be in effect. We are not addressing right now, commercial buildings. We're only addressing.
Oh, residential, even in on these dry, okay.
Correct. So if you have a commercial zone property, but you're using it for residential use, you would follow this guideline. If you're using it for commercial use, then you would follow the commercial.
Okay.
That was at 40%.
Yeah.
Correct. We've not, we're not trying to tackle those. We're trying to attack one creature at a time.
That would be the camel.
If there's, if you're in a district where there's multiple, if you're in an area where there's multiple overlays, I would assume the more restrictive would apply.
What we will do is we refine the maps is where they overlap, we will define them as being in one district or the other.
Okay.
So that they don't, we don't have enough.
Okay.
The midtown is pretty much the same as the highway corridors. Again, you could have metal structures if they are less than 120 square feet and behind the house. Otherwise, you could not. I'm sure this won't be the final draft. But what we've tried to do is take from your workshop, put it in an ordinance form so that we're getting closer to something that could go to the city council for consideration and trying to incorporate the various inputs from the planning commission. It's somewhat difficult because we haven't gotten a true consensus on some of these yet. But I'm sure we will as we continue to massage this. But this at least gives you a document to go through and read and schedule a workshop after you read it to help staff refine it. The only thing that we really don't have any, a good clarity to is the maximum size. We need additional input on that.
Maximum size on?
On any lot.
On any size lot. How big? How many square feet of accessory building can you have?
And we, there is currently that zoning ordinance that is.
That limits it to some degree based on coverage of the lot. You can only have so much of your lot covered and that includes.
It looks like, now, this, our ordinance says it's 25% of the lot for all buildings?
On residential, R one, and it's different for each zone. But if you go back and look at our zoning ordinance, it's spelled out by each zoning district. And then interior lots has one number, exterior lots, I think, has 5% more. I think it's 30% if it's a corner lot. And that sets the maximum that you can have. And I'm not sure that that has been strictly enforced.
I would bet you could guess that it has, huh?
Can we go back to that page seven for a minute here? Again, just to clarify it, the 25%, that's, that's in a portion of our standards now. And then what is the, the two and a half percent? Is that also?
That was a suggestion that was made by someone at your workshop that you had at your last meeting. And I just put those numbers in to show what that looked like.
For comparison. Currently, we are, we are held to what we're looking up there at the 25%. Is that?
Correct. On total lot coverage. Now, there is a second factor that you can only cover a certain amount of your backyard. And the backyard is defined by either 20 feet or 20% of your backyard area. Well, that varies depending on what the dimensions of your lots are. So that's almost has to be calculated on a case by case basis. So I had a hard time figuring out, I could simplify it and put it on here for you because ever lot that has a different dimensions, if it's 150 feet or 200 feet, then if you take 20 feet of that, well, it's a different number. And so trying to figure out to put that on one simple spreadsheet for you is very difficult because it's always something that you almost have to calculate lot by lot because of the very dimensions that you run into.
You got any suggestion how you can get away from that? Because that gets, that gets tangled up in a lot of staff time, I'm thinking, or whatever.
That's the way it works. That's why we're busy sometimes.
Well, we want to create something that has some flexibility to it so that people aren't always coming for variances.
Correct.
Excellent job. I'm really, great, great, great starting point for us and probably probably a lot of ending. Commissioners, any question of Mr. Olson?
I like what you've done.
And if you have comments or questions before your workshop individually, either visit with myself or Rebecca so that we can either research it or draft some alternative language based on your input that might help expedite it at the workshop, we would be glad. So we don't have to wait until, say, if you schedule the workshop as part of your next meeting or the hour before. If, you don't have to wait until that meeting to talk to us. So if you have ideals or questions, if you will let us know, we'll, we'll try to research that prior to the next meeting.
You know, it, on these, just looking at these, and of course, I've never gone around and thought about what a quarter acre is or one seventh of an acre. But when you, you know, mentioned earlier, I think you were talking about a quarter acre. And if you had a 2,000 square foot home on a quarter acre, then you'd only be able to have a 723 foot shed.
Well.
I don't know how much.
If you had a 700 foot garage, then you have no shed room left.
Now, if you're, but if your garage, if, if your garage is part of your house, then that, right?
But when you, typically, when you say how large your house is, you don't include the garage.
You don't include your garage?
No.
So like on my house.
Right.
I think my house is, it's between 1,900 and 2,000 square feet. Well, that's the house. The garage is. The garage is 700 square feet, and then-
What about two-story?
It has a porch on it, and it has a back patio that's covered. You have to add all those together.
What about two-story homes, though? The second-story square footage wouldn't count against it, would it?
Correct.
We're just looking at the footprint?
Correct.
You know, it's just when I look at it, you know, I live on about an acre, and, you know, that would allow you to have 10,000 square feet of a house. That's a lot of-
Correct.
That's a lot of square foot for an acre.
Correct.
It's hard for me, I guess, without going out and looking at something, thinking, you know, putting in a perspective how much of the property that would take up. Because I guess what we're not wanting is on a small piece of property to have, you know, basically everything but the easement covered in buildings.
Right.
If you took a typical, say, 2,500, 3,000-square-foot home on an acre lot, that still could leave you 7,000 feet-
Correct.
-for outbuildings. Well, including your, adding your garage in, of course. Maybe you had a three-car garage or something like that, too.
Correct. In the larger sites, that's why you may want to have further restrictions to reduce the size of a accessory building beyond what's in the zoning ordinance. But what, you can make this one more restrictive, but we don't want them to be in conflict. We don't want, if the current ordinance, say, for a quarter acre only allows you to cover 2,700 square feet, we don't want our ordinance all of a sudden to say you can cover 3,000.
Right.
Because then we were in conflict with the zoning ordinance. So we're trying to make all these dovetail together so that we, because some of our ordinance do conflict with each other, and it creates interpretation issues.
Well, I appreciate your work on it, and Rebecca. It is complex, and it is, it's a camel that might come together.
I know we don't want to rush this, but we have been working on it for a few months now as a commission, and y'all have been working on it for a long time, but is the intention maybe to have another workshop and another commission meeting before it goes forward, or just take as much time as we want?
I, I have a different philosophy than some. I work for cities where they rush and they adopt something with the concept, well, we'll fix it later. And I work from a concept that I try to have it correct before I adopt it so that it starts out smooth and is implemented smoothly, and I don't have to come back and make a bunch of corrections. There's no guarantee. It's very difficult to write, just look at all the laws we have, and trying to write one law to fit all the different scenarios is very difficult.
Very difficult.
But I would like to think that we're comfortable, that we're as close as we can. We've had this issue for, what, 20 years?
At least.
And so if it takes us another three months to get something, we're still addressing a lot quicker than the time that we've had to deal with this problem.
Sure. Yeah. I know some folks are waiting on their applications first, one way or the other.
No, I totally concur with you. I think we should try to get it right the first time, as close to right as we can, at least, so.
Well, the way to expedite it would be to have a meeting before our next meeting.
Another workshop. Is that, I would like to maybe suggest another workshop before our meeting next time, a good hour, an hour, hour and a half, like we did last time. Is that something that we can work with you on your schedule, Ms. Blaine?
Or at the very least, have a workshop before our next meeting.
Yeah, are you saying before the time of our next meeting, on the same date, or a date prior to our next regular meeting?
Either or, but I mean, if we were trying to be expeditious and try to do something for people to have application, maybe before, but if not-
Quite frankly, I would think you could-
It's going to take us a little while to absorb all this, too.
And next Thursday, potentially, you could have a special meeting and have a workshop. I mean, would be one option. I would look at the calendar on what is-
Board of Adjustment.
Okay, you could do it either before or after, if they're available.
We have Board of Adjustment next Thursday.
We have Board of Adjustment next Thursday. It's at 5:30. I don't know if before is feasible for you all.
Well, I think we all need to read and digest this good, and as Leroy mentioned, if there's anything that, any comes up that you could answer ahead of time, or Rebecca, so that then we could bring it before all four of us or five of us, we have our, to tweak a few things here, is next week. Would that, how's everybody look for next Thursday?
I think that's great, for me.
Well, I know how about yourself, 4:30?
I don't think I could accommodate next week very easily.
Okay.
So.
How about the week after?
Probably looking at having one prior to your next regular meeting.
What about our next regular meeting? What about a workshop? What about other than a Thursday? And I know we need, we need Ms. Blaine there, but are there any other days that you're available or can make yourself available for a workshop, 4:30 or 5:30 at night or something?
Yeah, and I guess I would throw out possibly Tuesdays, like the 13th or the 20th. The 13th probably doesn't give you all a lot of time. It may be Tuesday, the 20th.
That sounds good to me.
Tuesday, the 20th, are you saying maybe 4:30?
Either, either one, whatever, I mean, I'm available. It's if you guys are.
How's that look for you, Chris? Tuesday, the 20th, or?
Yeah, I can make that work.
Tuesday, the 20th, at 4:30?
That is city council meeting night, so.
You got a workshop that night, or can we meet upstairs?
Or, or some other day better.
I don't know yet whether we have a workshop or not.
Okay.
If you're not objectionable to Wednesday night, the 21st is clear, I think, at City Hall. You're on vacation now.
I can change it, or I can come in for the meeting. It's fine.
But that-
Wednesday, the 21st is clear, I think.
How about that? How's that look for you, Chris? Wednesday, the 21st?
That's the day before Thanksgiving, if you're on vacation.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no.
We didn't ask for any public comments, ma'am. We didn't ask for any public comments, ma'am.
One would work for you.
But we appreciate that one.
I was just joking.
You know, even if the city council has a workshop, Mr. City Manager, we could meet down here, we could meet around a table down here. We do have to have one of you with us, is that correct? I mean, is this, is there anything that we can?
Would make sense for one of us to be present.
Right, with the changes, yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't do any good.
Why don't we look at calendars, and we'll communicate throughout the whole thing.
Well, I think probably three of us, no problem, but we do have one working gentleman here, and we need, and we want him here.
Yes.
So right now-
If I have a couple of weeks' notice, I can adjust my schedule.
Tuesday, the 20th, well, would work for you. What about Wednesday, the 21st? Well, that's the day before Thanksgiving, that's no good.
20th is, okay.
And just the 21st.
You all three and me?
Yes, and thank you very much for the good job of you and Ms. Blaine. Okay, let's move on. We'll, we'll look to hear from, again, apparently, if Tuesday, the 20th, would be a time that Chris could at least be there, if that would work. So you guys can maybe let us know that, Ms. Blaine, huh? So technically, I mean, that is a city council meeting, and I guess if they have a workshop, they're upstairs, we could meet down here, or, or whatever.
Wasn't that loaded up earlier?
Workshop would be at 6:00, and then they meet here for council at 7:00.
Oh, okay, their workshop's at 6:00. So if we met at 4:30, we could, we could have that hour, maybe even an hour and a half if we needed it, and then bail out of there for them if they had a workshop. Would that be, this makes a long day for you.
That's okay. I'm here if you guys can make it.
Is that preferable than doing a workshop right before the next meeting at 4:30?
Well, you know, what that would do is give us a chance to talk, and if we don't arrive, if we got any questions, we might have to have one before the next meeting, too. Again, I think we've heard, we don't want to rush this, we want to do it right. Shall we aim for Tuesday, the 20th? Is that, will that work with you, Mr. Renee?
So far?
Mr. Joe?
What time on the 20th?
4:30? Will that work for you?
Yeah.
Tuesday, the 20th, at 4:30? And unless we hear different, it will be upstairs. Is that okay? And maybe if you'd be so kind as to hit us with a little email to remind us?
Yes.
Some of us have memory problems. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good job, Commissioners, and good job, staff. We're up to item eight, staff comments. Any staff comments? You're about commented out.
The only comment I have is I did send the live link to the map with all the overlay districts in it, so feel free to familiarize yourself with that and let me know if there's any boundary changes that you see that need to be made.
It's on here, too, right?
Yes, and then each district is in the packet.
And as Commissioner Bryant mentioned, if there's any overlay, overlap on the overlays, you're going to let us know, obviously, probably the more restrictive would apply in that situation.
Want to go to downtown.
Okay, Commission comments. Ms. Spinato?
I have none, just kudos to staff and city manager for putting this all together. It was very well done. Thank you.
Mr. Chris Bryant?
Yeah, I would echo thanks to the planning staff, and then it's, it's almost old news now, but congratulations to Rebecca and her team in the City of Guthrie on being named one of the great places in America.
Under planning, isn't that right? Wasn't that a planning award?
By the American Planning Association.
Yeah. Correct.
Leave it to Mr., yes, Mr. Chapel?
Ditto. Thank you, guys.
Same thing, and thank you, folks, for showing up and being here this evening. It's always good to have somebody here. And with that, we will-